Destruction on Lake Thunderbird. I've thought about that a lot. Are they the only thing that is causing the problems? Or is it possible that ski boats and pontoons and the sheer number of boats on the water at one time could all contribute to the fact that properties are being damaged and soil erosion is happening? We're in a property explosion, folks. I'm just going to tell you. I mean, I've lived here 13 years and it's, I've never seen anything like it. I mean, they're buying up every vacant lot that's available on the lake and they're building houses on them, on lots that we used to make jokes when we would be out there fishing. There is no way anybody can build a house on that. And guess what? They're building houses on them. So we're in a property explosion, which makes me wonder where are we going to be 10 years from now? It's not the same world that it used to be in 1973. Lakefront buyers, the age of buyers has changed. It's no longer just retired people. I see them every day in my store. They're, they're all ages. People are a lot younger than I am that are coming and moving into our area, coming from all over parts of different world. And I think they're coming here because it's serene, it's peaceful, it's quiet, and my goodness, it's beautiful. I mean, I'm just, I'm thrilled to even live here. So I'm worried about in these, these times that we're in, if we have anything that we could possibly adjust for the new people that are coming in, do we want to discourage new people from coming in because we say this is just the way it's going to be, too bad and you can either like it or go home? Or are we going to try to come to some sort of a compromise? And I don't know what that is. I'm going to be honest with you. In my notes, I don't have a good answer for this whole wave boat thing. And I'll be honest with you, I don't know, you guys may know, I could go out there on Thunderbird right now on my fishing boat and I could not point to one boat out there I knew was a wave boat. I don't know what they look like. I don't know how they run. I don't know how they feel. And, and I, I would like to see one. I'd like to see what it does because I would like to be able to blame that before we start segmenting people groups and, and particular kinds of items and say, well, that's the 100% of the cause of all these problems and kick them off the water. Because we need to make sure that that's the only problem and there, I have a feeling there's a lot of other things to blame for damage. Should we study more of this as a new board and then try to come to some sort of universal decision? The number of boats that are out there on the lake is, at one time, is unbelievable. The 4th of July was like bumper boats. There's that many people out there. Speed has been issued. Well, they're speeding and, and everybody hates bass boats. So I'm just going to tell you, I own a bunch of them. And the only way you can get that bass boat up onto a plain part of the water is to speed for a moment and then pull it back and I could drive 30 miles an hour all day long. Because you've got to have some force to get it on top of the water. So speed may not be the only problem that we have. It is probably excessive waves that are being produced that's causing the problem. And we've got to figure out what is causing that. Is it ski boats? Is it pontoons? Is it the bass fishermen? Is it the wave boats? What is it that's causing the problem? I mean, they have an area right now that they can use, and I, I guess my question was is do they ever venture out of that area? I don't know.
Yes, they do. And they are all man.
Well, we're not, we can't, we can't, we can't.
Let us, let us continue, please.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm worried that, that we segment a group and we drop the gavel and say, okay, this is the end of it. When, I've had one meeting here and I've been up a lot of nights trying to study all these things and now we've had a man resign and I'm, and I'm, I'm working and I'm thinking, holy smoke, I ain't got time to even breathe. And then we come here with volatile issues like this and we want to separate or segment a people group or a type of machinery until we really understand what's going on. I, I, I had this scenario and I'm going to shut up because I'm starting to preach. I, I had thought about guys that play golf and let's say that you see these golf carts out here and we know the speed that those golf carts go on and that's suitable, that's okay for the, the course. Guys walking, pulling their bags are okay. But then let's say we had a group of guys that come in and they love to drive dune buggies. And they're like, I want to play golf, but I want to use my dune buggy because I like to jump the tee boxes when I'm going from hole to hole. And I should have the right to do that. But you see, that's destructive to the golf course and the makeup of the ground. And that's what we have to decide. Are these boats destructive to the makeup of our lake and our waterway in a way that we need to exclude them or come up with something to change it? So I, I present these words to the board so that we would come together and study this and think about it. And I understand, I mean, there's tons of information. I see people that come into my store daily and talk to me about it. And trust me, I'm out there fishing and, and I'm just telling you, it's, it's, I don't know, the wave boat from a wave boat from a ski boat, but I can tell you, there are lots of waves being produced by all kinds of things, including pontoon boats with 200 horse motors on them. I'm done.
Okay. And I think specifically, thank you for that. I think specifically, what we're talking about is the filling of the ballast. I want to keep reiterating that because it's important to understand that the filling of the ballast is what we're referring to. We're not, I believe, unless someone else has a differing opinion, we're, we're, the boats are not to be outlawed. The actual boat themselves can get out on the lake and, and will skier. We're not saying they can't do that. The act of wave surfing requires that you put water in your ballast and create a deeper wave is, is what the, what that is. And again, I state in my opinion, I live on the water, I see it very rarely, I know it happens, I see it very, very rarely, that particular act of wave surfing. And I'm not ready yet to, I'm, I'm like you, I can't, I can't see that the damage to docks is from that, from those six boats alone as infrequent, as infrequent as they're used. But that's my opinion. So your motion on the floor, we haven't approved the agenda yet, we haven't even gotten that for that part. Your motion on the floor is to strike the wave boat decision until we have a full board?
Correct. This is the second. Let me read one comment from 16 different households. Perhaps the operators of the wake boats and boats with higher horsepower, over 100 horsepower, should operate during a 360 degree turn in their cove where they live for half an hour to determine what the damage would be to their property, their boats, and their shoreline. Again, I'm trying to represent the people that I've talked to on Thunderbird because the wake boats should be allowed, in my opinion, and I hope to verify that tomorrow when I'm out on the lake. But I cannot justify the surfing and the filling of the bladder. Please hold your comments till the end. Does that make sense to my fellow, my fellow commissioners?
Again, the motion's on the floor. I second that motion and we now will vote on whether or not to push the wave boat decision until we have a full board. That's the motion. Mr. Kaiser, will you vote?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Niebel?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
I'd say yes.
Okay. My vote is a yes as well, so we push it.
But an African, an Hispanic vote is also a yes vote, is that correct?
In that case, I vote no. I'm changing to that one.
All right. So we have a majority and we're going to strike that from today's agenda. The other item on the agenda is the campground lease.
Can I ask a question real quick? Are we going to set a date to bring that back on the agenda or is it just off until further?
Uh, no, just put it on the, you can keep it on the agenda for old business.
Right, you'll meet him on May?
And figure out how to.
Okay.
As soon as we get another, I'm understanding is another board member in place and ready to roll.
That is my, yes, that is my opinion. That's true motion and I second. I think that's a five member vote is to four.
Okay.
Considering that this campground, anyway, the rest of the, the rest of the agenda, does anybody have an issue with the rest of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written, with the exception, we just changed it to remove the wake board issue and perhaps even the campground issue.
Well, are you moving to move the campground issue currently?
I'm not sure because at this point, when I read what I see, it looks like we absolutely need another one or two people to come on board and say, here's what we think we would do with the campgrounds.
Right. Okay. And that's, that's for that conversation, that's what I, that's, that's part of what this agenda is. So, so the, the agenda has been, did you move to approve the agenda? Did you, and you second?
Aye.
Anyone second?
Second.
And it's a whole vote on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Before we start with the agenda, items on the agenda, which there is, there are a couple of items on the agenda, old business and new business. It is now that I can ask if anyone has a question or, or a comment about the agenda items only. If you have a comment about the agenda items only, you may, you may get three minutes to talk about that.
Do you have two?
The two agenda items are campground lease, can you guys get your agenda? Okay. Campground lease management, wake boat, obviously we just threw that out, and the commissioner appointee. Does anyone want to talk? Is that Steve back there?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Just step up here to the microphone, please. Anyone who would like to talk and just line up behind me and speak next.
I'm Steve Thompson. Been a resident of Cherokee Village now for almost 23 years. And I'm trying to be very careful about the adjusted agenda that you've just, you know, taken steps on. It would be helpful, especially for those of us that are still working, that, you know, if you're going to have an agenda and that, and we take time away from our business to kind of offer some comment, that we provide an opportunity to do so. If you're going to wait until a subsequent meeting, it would be helpful to know that as well. And again, you know, since you've removed the wave boat agenda, you know, from that, I would have to ask you for permission to comment on that. We're all waiting until a subsequent meeting and that gets back on your agenda.
Absolutely. I'll give you permission to comment, you just have three minutes.
Okay. As I mentioned, I've, I've been a resident for 23, nearly 23 years. Two years, over two years, my wife and I resided on one part of the lake. There were no wave boats back in 1999 and 2000. They didn't exist. The problem with erosion, the problem with docks breaking, mostly those were docks that had maintenance neglected during that timeframe. They weren't designed for heavy boat traffic. And quite frankly, the boat traffic that was really creating problems for both and, and property that we rented, didn't have a concrete seawall. It had a rock, rock seawall that had been placed. The erosion was an issue then. The damage to docks was an issue then. And it was an issue primarily on the operators not operating their watercraft properly. And believe me, I can sit there and go load a pontoon. I've owned a pontoon. I currently own a ski boat. It is not an issue of horsepower. It is not a matter of features on the boat. It is a matter of how that operator conducts and operates that watercraft. As Mr. Kaiser mentioned, if you're in a fishing boat, you know, once you plan it out, you, there are many fishing boats that offer little or no weight once they're planned out. Same thing with my ski boat. But I can tell you right now, there's pontoon boats that have less than 100 horsepower on them. And if I go overload those pontoon boats, especially with adults to the rear of that, of that boat, I can throw a weight that would put a wave boat to shame. And I've seen it too many times. Now, I've also witnessed those, and I can tell the difference between a wave boat, I know most of the owners. And I can tell you on the major holidays, those boats are at the dock and they are there entertaining guests that have come into town, family and friends. They're not out on the lake because much like my grandson, who skis far better than I ever could, and he doesn't want to get out there when there's three to four dozen pontoon boats traversing Lake Thunderbird. It's no fun. So again, it's not, you're not looking at the type of craft. You have to look at the operator. And when you see an incident where somebody, no matter what their watercraft is, whether they're doing donuts in a cove, whether they're, you know, going the wrong direction, which is particularly a problem during the holidays, you know, one person running Lake Patrol can cover the whole lake. It takes a community of people that go and identify and fix their boat and, and report that as they can to Lake Patrol and say, hey, we've got a problem with this particular operator. And I would just ask you a difference of time and thank you so much for allowing my comments. And that would be what I would offer in a future meeting.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else on agenda items?
Hi. My name is Deanne Draper. I've been a resident here almost 19 years. I had them a cave house for 18 of those. Anyway, I have a comment about the election. We spent a lot of time and money and effort to have an election recently and the will of the voters took over. And after that, we had the commissioner resign. It makes sense to me that the will of the voters should carry through to the resigning commissioner's position, where the next person that had, with the fourth in mind, that have the most votes, should take that position. It only makes sense. It's the will of the voters. And we've had the comments of the good old voice system before, and that will alleviate one of those. Just say it. And I, I've talked to other people that feel the same way. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the agenda items?
Does anyone have a wave boat thing?
If you would like, yes, ma'am.
I'm Mary Ann Quick. I live on Lake Omaha. And I think you have the wrong approach to the wakeboard solution. You need to be looking at the size of the waves, not the equipment of the boat. It's like telling a Ferrari, you're capable of going too fast, so now you can't use your accelerator. You know, the, the problem is coming from the wake. And there's been so many studies that have been done on wave energy and wake energy. Toad Water Sports Association has conducted such a study. There's all kinds of them out there. And I would suggest sit other boats, including mine, which is, I am not a wakeboard owner or a wakeboat owner, nor do I know anyone who has one. But I have, we have an inboard, outboard. And I can throw it higher than my coffee table. And my kids for years, the kids in the family, have two boars and wakeboarded a boat. And you can't, and you deny this filling of bladder at all. You're regulating their boat, but you're not regulating mine. And that's not right. You have to have something that is uniform. You know, you can't tell Ferrari, you can't use your accelerator. It has to be the result. And I would like to suggest that you put together a special committee, a dock some, some wave height for this year, let it expire in six months. And in the meantime, put together a special committee that will pull these studies and maybe solve all of the problems with wave energy, what we need to do, what possible solutions are, everything from banning boats to brand tolling things in to whatever. Look at all those possibilities and then come back to the board with recommendations and ultimate suggestions.
Thank you, Steve.
Excuse me. How many times do you think this should be kicked down the road?
You're asking me? I, until there is, you know, what I see is that if a van on bladders is done, Sid is going to get some began and you're going to lose again, okay? And it's going to be expensive because you're discriminating for no reason against a type. You can't discriminate against the equipment on a boat. It's like saying you can't have a motor. Yeah, yeah, it's.
I have the question, how many times should we kick this down the road, ma'am?
Until it's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
If someone else wants to speak.
This is, I've been coming to these meetings, this is Garrett, Chuck Garrett.
Okay.
I've been there for 22 years. I was coming to these meetings four years ago and we were discussing these white boats back then. And the commissioners in wouldn't do nothing about that. It's not the white boats, it's when they put the water in and it causes the waves. That's the problem. Having the white boats out there wouldn't be a problem if you, what the committee gave recommendations on the last time, the, the, without putting water in them, it causes the waves. That's what's always the problem. It's not so much a whiteboard, I shouldn't have been in, but I think at some point you should stop any more of them coming on the lake because this lake is too small. And I don't know how long y'all will keep putting this off. Like I said, I've been in the good times of these meetings, I quit trying to cause nothing's ever done by the other committee. They always say they're going to form a committee. And I was told I was going to be on and I told them, they even went up and told me I didn't want to be on because I knew what the committee was going to be. Just to wait for him to put it off or another, kick it down the road. And that's been, been, been kicked down the road for four years and nothing's been done. I think at some point, y'all need to make a decision what you're going to do and do it. And not put it on the agenda anymore that you're going to have to make a decision and not do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, you have another person with a hand.
Paul Hinch, I just have two questions for you. One would be, you have the campground, you know, you were going to make some decisions today. There's a lot of new people here. It might be a good idea to inform everyone what we're making, what you're going to be making the decision on, so a description of the issue at hand would be appropriate. Number two, I think it seems like there's a lot of confusion on the wake boats, perhaps a committee or some more investigation, some technical information as opposed to emotional information would be appropriate as well before we make a final decision on this because it is a pretty emotional and volatile issue. And I think you want to make the correct decision and that decision will be based, should be based on facts and, and technical information. So that's it. Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Again, I've talked to a lot of people around Thunderbird. I've represented their perspective. Please understand that as a new commissioner, I want to carry forward and have their trust and understanding. And if I sound mean and ugly and angry, I apologize to you for that. However, I know what they've done to me in six days having been a commissioner.
Ms. Penny?
Penny Trumpy, on your election, Tim, you took your position a year, you were appointed a year ago because a vacancy happened. So you have rules and guidelines in place of how to fill a vacancy, which Mr. Best's position is a vacancy. So that, and if I believe I remember right, that is to be appointed so that it stays on cycle. And if I'm not mistaken, even though you, even the people that ran that did not get elected can actually apply for that position, but it still goes through the rules and regulations that are already in place.
Are you asking here? The rules and regulations from before were appointing. There were no rules about what would take place before the appointment. Because the SID commissioners were appointing themselves, I wasn't here two years ago, but at some point they were appointing themselves and there was no formal interview process until Jim Best was appointed. And when Jim Best was appointed, there was a somewhat formal interview process that they did. And then they appointed the person who got the most votes out of this small panel that they put together. And I was the exact same one. Went through an interview process with some, I think there were some city council people there, old commissioners, different community members that decided, that just made notes and, and kind of gave that information as a committee to those, to those two commissioners to appoint me. And then we came to the election. So we adopted the election rules of Holiday Island, which state that if a commissioner leaves in the middle of their term, the remaining commissioners appoint that next commissioner to fulfill the rest of that term. So that's what we're, we're doing today. Anyone else? Okay. So we've approved this.
Come to the microphone, please. Stay, Janine.
Kathy Angles had a phone meeting with Tim Hutchinson, just a little bit off. And he said that he didn't feel that it'd be really necessary since it was so immediate that the commissioner resigned, to go through any kind of formal processes. He felt that the court would not ask anybody to go through all that and that they would just say, you know, just pick the next person on the line, which surprised me because that reads a little bit, to me, you know, a little bit differently than the way the law says in the revised law 2020. But he's, he felt that the court would not expect us to, to go through all that since we just decided. So that's what I wanted to, to let, you know, and, and, you know, I suppose there's probably some other reasons for that too. But I'm just going to, in conversation with that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else on the agenda items? Real City Anderson?
Those are ripers on the building that y'all are.
Big squirrels.
Big squirrels.
Out there. All right. So on to old business, campground lease management. And I think Mr. Hinch brought a good point. We haven't discussed it as a new board. And I, I won't throw this out there as well. I think some of these things do seem like they're taking forever, to your point. And, and, but months and months of going through a, the litigation and then moving through, moving into an election, we thought that the biggest items on agendas needed to be voted on by a full board. And that's why we put these off until now. The issue is, the problem is, in my opinion, now it's time to get these new commissioners up to speed and allow them to get a hold of things before we just automatically start voting. So that's what the wave boat discussion was on Monday. And now we'll have a campground lease management discussion. I would open that discussion by saying that we have a campground that is in disrepair that, that needs work. So the first question, the first item that I'd like to throw out there for, for discussion is, do we, as an SID, do we want to put our money into it and then, and then create revenue from it? Do we want to do it ourselves instead of leasing that space out to interested parties? And I'll, I'll leave it there for comment.
Well, after reviewing this proposal, I had given the previous SID commissioners three years back a cost estimate of what it would need to rehabilitate the campgrounds. And they were a little shocked. And reading And reading through this proposal, I cannot see how River Country Tours can do this for the price of a foot. I, there's no way I can see them. So, I think what we need is more bids. I mean, one single bid is not going to, is not going to make this. Every place I've gone, who's been a majority, you've got to add three bids, and take the best bid out of it. So at this time, I say, no, this proposal.
Can I make a statement, please? We, we put this out, when we put this out for bid, we had two proposals that came back in. We can't really look at this like we're getting a bid, three bids to repair something, because they're coming to us for the services. So, we had two, two proposals that came in, one pulled out after the meeting. Um, I have spoken to this, this proposal, and they would like to revise it since so much time has passed, since this was done.
Yeah, let me, let me move forward for this. The question that, the question really on the table is, do we want to do it ourselves, or do we want to put it back out for bid? That's the question. Do we want to, uh, maintain it ourselves and create, spend our money, SID's money, uh, to fix it up over time, however, uh, put it as a capital purchase, or as a capital expenditure? Or do we want leasing it out, it is an option, uh, to somebody, but I can guarantee you, leasing it out would be a land lease to some degree, uh, and you couldn't charge a lot for it, because they're going to want to, they're going to want to spend all their money to fix it, and then they're going to want that return. So, the question again at hand is, do you want, or are you not prepared to have, have that discussion yet?
Well, I'm curious as to what kind of expenditures would we go for to revive them, and what would it cost us as SID to maintain it and keep it going, that's my question.
Well, yeah.
Run best, I mean, twenty thousand, twenty thousand, or fifty to a hundred?
No, uh, when I gave him the estimate before, it was of twenty new stalls down there, without opening up the lower campground, we're looking at close to $200,000 for putting in the cement, the new water, the new electrical, rejuvenating the, uh, shower area, I mean, there's a lot of money to be spent there to get it up to par again. And I, I just, at this time, I don't see it feasible for us.
I do see that it's operational today.
Right.
And it's creating about seven or eight thousand dollars revenue?
Um, we've been really busy. I think we've got five campers down there today, through the weekend. Um, last month in March, we, we made right at $700, and we exceeded that in the first week of April. The potential is there. Um, we, we have one space down there that has the 50 amp, and the 50 amp is what's going to serve as our newer RVs. Uh, what we found is that some of the newer RVs have come in and used the 30 amp, and then they use their generator to pick up the slack, which gives them the power that they need. So, at this point, it hasn't prevented us from being able to have people come to the campsite. You know, sure, it'd be great to have a concrete pad for them to sit on. I, I think initially, we could probably spend in the $60,000 range, just to get our water and our electric to the current 20s that are up top. And it would be future capital expenditures, uh, that would have to be looked at to really bring it back to life. Um, it's on schedule to have the bathrooms painted next week, they're not in disrepair. Could they use a new countertop? Sure, we need some doors on the stalls, they've got shower curtains hanging. But those are some minimal things that, because we didn't choose to let this go to lease, that we've kind of taken on to keep things rolling, because we do have interest in people wanting to stay there.
So the, the dump station works?
Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Page?
Well, not to be argumentative, because I've already played that role, and I lost the card. However, I've been down to the campgrounds, and I love them. They're really rural, and when I worked for the Department of Natural Resources, I ran a campground in a remote area, where I rode my motorcycle in, I put my tent up, and I stayed for two weeks, and they actually paid me for four. That was a deal for me going to college, and I loved it. And I think we have that opportunity, not only in the 20 camp sites that we have, because if I asked for a show of hands of who's been in the bathrooms at the campground, there would probably be two or three of you, maybe five. I'm going to ask, raise your hand if you've been in. There's two, three, four, five, okay. That's exactly what I predicted, but they work. And while they're a little bit antiquated, maybe is the word, people who were going down to the campground, who were criminals, were vandalizing our facility for a while, until we had the police rotate through there, and I think that's part of the problem, we've got to repair. When I looked at it, and I think we ought to maintain it without a lease for the short year, and it may be because we have the opportunity to make an awful lot of money in two years because of the eclipse coming over. We are anticipating literally thousands of people to come here, because it's going to be right over us, and I would love to see us fill the whole area. I'd love to see lots of tents in that area, where we charge a minimal amount, and that's money just coming to Sid. And I didn't complain.
If, if I may add too, the only other expense that we have down there, of course, we have a, a water expense, uh, for the bathrooms and for the, the hookups, that is less than $300 a month at this point, even in the heat of the summer. Last year, when I look back at the financials, it wasn't any, a, a major expense. Uh, we keep Wi-Fi down there, uh, one, because the maintenance shop was down there, but I left the Wi-Fi, so campers and, and tent people could have Wi-Fi to hook up one. Um, we have a light lease on the upper part, uh, for the big floodlights, it's two floodlights, it's $109 a month. So I would say that the overall expense for the campground is less than $1,000 to maintain.
And I believe you have a person who works for us down there right now, right? Who maintains it?
Well, we have somebody down there being the attendant, so that's really helpful with those people who show up and don't pay, having someone down there to knock on the door, get the information, and in some cases, we've collected money down there, just because they didn't have transportation to get to us, or they came in on the weekend and the office was closed.
We do all rounds up, Pete.
We do. Now, when we did our, um, when we did our landscaping contract, we did not include base harp, because we thought we were going to be subleasing that out, and so it wasn't included. Fortunately, we've had the equipment still, and, you know, a guy goes down and spends a couple hours on a zero turn, and then the attendant went back and pushed mode around each one of the campers, so that we weren't interrupting or taking a chance of, you know, blowing rocks or anything, and we kept it going. We put some straw down, it was wet, just little stuff.
So is it my understanding that the decision on the table currently, it hasn't, a motion has not been moved, but, uh, the decision on the table is whether we're going to even attempt to lease it, or we're going to keep it in-house? Uh, it sounds to me like there, there is some agreement on keeping it in-house currently. Uh, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that Sid maintains the base harp campgrounds.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All four ayes. Thank you, Bessie. All right, uh, it is time for us to vote on breaking out to executive session, we're going to have to vote on this, so, uh, can I, can I get a motion to break out into executive session?
I make motion to vote to executive session.
To discuss appointee considerations. Can I make a second?
Second.
Second, it has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for, uh, for letting us do that, uh, and sticking around. So, the debate obviously was, was for, uh, was, was about appointees. We understand through our regulations, our current regulations, uh, that we follow, uh, this board has the right to appoint, uh, whoever they wish, uh, and the process that they take to do that, um, can be debated, uh, so, and can be different any time, but the, the process of appointing a commissioner when there is a, when one drops a term, uh, this board has that right. So, uh, my understanding, when we debated this, we had to make no decisions. So, I'm going to ask for motions from the floor, uh, based on our debates, and move from there concerning the, uh, the new commissioner appointment.
So. I, uh, I would like to suggest that we appoint Susan Jett to fill that position
I second it.
So the motion, uh, to appoint Susan Jett as the fifth commissioner, uh, to full, to fulfill, uh, Mr. Best's remaining two years on board, uh, has been moved and seconded, and, uh, we will now vote. Uh, Mr. Nevel, yea or nay?
Yea.
Mr. Kaiser?
Yea.
Mr. Page?
I've had a lot of people approach me, but I have to support my team, and the team is, and we've been here with Mr. Lee, Mr. Kaiser, Mr. Nevel, and so I will say yea.
My vote is also yea for the appointment. So we discussed, uh, also commissioner titles and positions, uh, which are, uh, chair, myself being the chair for, for one year, uh, and then Mr. Page is moving into the vice chair role, and Mr. Nevel is secretary, and Mr. Kaiser will be an at-large, along with Mrs. Jett. So that's where we are. Comments before we adjourn?
Well, I'd like to say, we probably have to get her approval for that nomination for her. Would you agree to do it, or would you like mental town?
She's here, dude.
I'd be happy to.
Does that mean we need to make some special dispensations, since we never had a lady on the board?
This is historic, never been a female on the board.
That is my point. Because we've never had one, we've always had the approach in the past, where people just rotated, and this is the first time that I feel so good that we've had an election, we have people who are coming here who are for the interest of Cherokee Village, and not for some personal egos or interests. This is so key to where we're going, to improve the facilities, the golf, golf course, there I am today. And, and other activities that we're trying to do, so, uh, this is a political announcement for all.
Comments on anything, not just the general items?
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Turn the line, please. Turn the line.
The line form's here. Thank you, thank you for doing that, we appreciate it, the people that I was talking to, um, really, we're hoping that Susan Jett would be on the board, and we are tickled. Thank you.
Be politically correct, I said congratulations to everyone, but that's not mine.
What's your name?
I'm Scott Mearns, uh, I'm here in Cherokee Village. I actually, my question is just to get an update. Um, Mearns said there's damage to the golf course, and was just wondering, uh, there's rumors that the kids were caught, and police were working on it, and so, that was just one thing I was hoping to hear about, either my opinion or something.
Would you mind if I address that?
Sure.
Okay, since I know a little bit about the golf courses, we had a young man who apparently took his truck and went around the putting surface on the south. If you didn't know that, apologize for the first time you heard of it. However, because of an application on his phone, we may, uh, may not be able to do anything unless we have physical evidence or a video of that individual doing the damage. However, at this point, we do intend to have the guys who work on the south golf course continue to improve that putting surface, and they've done a pretty good job to try to bring it back. We expect it to take two to four years to really get it back to where it was, but we also have insurance, if I understand that correctly, so that may help if we have any major expenses. Does that help, sir?
Yes, very much, thank you. And to follow up, do we know if there's a casting done of the actual tire tracks?
To my knowledge, the, the police did not do anything, and the guys began repairing the golf course before that was an opportunity to be taken.
Okay, thank you. As a former law enforcement, I just had to ask that question.
Uh, my name is John Ledge, just got some ideas about the tennis court down here, uh, I guess that's going to go to the, to the golf course people, so that'd be you, Ron. Kind of talking about maybe getting some new, uh, of the stuff that goes around the sides, so that you, it keeps the wind out, but the main thing would be nice to have a, a backboard, so that people could go down there and practice. Uh, usually you see that a lot, a lot of course, just so you can hit the ball against it, you know, keep it straight.
That's a great opportunity, and I'm very expensive for the backboard. Don't know about the components that go around the course itself, John. Do we need to do a little research? If you can do that for me, and send it to me, or give it to me at the SID office, we have to look into it, and then try to get it into budget.
Okay, nope.
It's up to you, you're a former.
All I can say now is, your checkbook is my open.
My name is John Ledge, and I happen to be with the police department.
John, what's your last name?
Hinch.
Okay.
And I can address the question that you had, that, the case is still under investigation, there are things, uh, that are being looked at at this particular point. Nobody has been arrested, uh, hopefully, we will have something more on it shortly. Uh, however, there is a recommendation that we have for you, as the board wants to credit. On any of these public buildings like this, it'd be nice to have some sort of camera systems. That would have resolved the issue right away, uh, if they actually had one here, they don't have to be extensive camera systems, but some sort of camera systems. All the public buildings are subject to vandalism, or to damage, or to break in at any time, and, and, uh, for this particular thing, yes, we do have a suspect, we do have things going on with it, and as soon as we possibly can, we will get more information out.
Great.
I want to thank you, in our next meeting, I've already brought this board, our next, next meeting about security cameras at our facilities, to hopefully catch stuff like this in the future.
Yes, it's, it's very important. It's makes, we have a small police department and limited facilities, so everything that the public, or in this case, the SID, whatever can do to help, would reveal online on cameras and such, that makes it that much easier and much better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I may miss something, and I apologize if I did. Um, I just was wondering what plan that we have for getting, um, schools that don't cause, we have a five-year plan, or, um, anything kind of, you know, I realize you probably don't even have a bright pitch yet, but, is there some type of goal? And possibly, um, I guess my other concern is, if we use a building for more stuff, you know, if schools are working, kids' parties.
know, if pools are working, kids' parties, things like that, you know, be running toward, there's just no other possibilities. Tie flyers club, I don't know if we even have those around here. Those guys, you know, when they get together, they do that, usually good at different fundraisers for different projects. So, I, I just kind of was wondering if, you know, if we had a, kind of a plan moving forward, maybe some different options, and how long it might take to get there.
Yes, ma'am. If I, if I can begin answering that one, thank you for your question. And, I think it's, but the answer, the answer that I have, that I have, and I know, things have just taken so long, right? I mean, we're ready to start working on the important stuff, like the pools and the Omaha Center, but this was very important to get this particular, this out of the way, so we have the full board, and then start making these decisions. My thought is now, is in the next month, excuse me, in the next week or so, I would like to have a working meeting. You know, a working meeting is where we're just throwing stuff on the wall and prioritizing it, and now is when we do that, since we will have a full board, have all five persons input, the public will be there, be the same as a meeting, we won't make any decisions on anything, but it's time to start discussing all of those things. I mean, it's not the pools, or just the tip of the iceberg, there's so many more things we need to get through and talk about. And again, prioritizing them, see which ones we can vote on quickly, which ones we can't, which ones we need more research on, and move from there. So, you can expect to see something out in the next week or so, availability, if these guys are available, and ladies, then we, so you'll see something very, very soon with that, and, and we'll start working through those big things. And that's a big deal. That's gonna be on the top of the list, in my opinion, because if we don't start work now, we have no chance of it opening by next summer. And it's, it's a very good question, and I appreciate it. Does anyone else have a comment about all the items like that?
I got one little bit, and I want to bring it up, and probably mainly this to the board here, and Betsy, but we, for the last couple of years, have had Tuesday night mass turns, and we were rotating between Thunderbird and Omaha, and we have anywhere from 10 to 20 people that shows up. We fish for four hours, come in, and everybody weighs their fish, whoever has the biggest one, or whatever, the most weight, gets higher much cash we collect from everybody, which is like 50 bucks. Everybody throws it in the pot, and we all leave with bragging rights, high and mighty, oh, you want more, whatever. All the fish are released, and we tell the stories about how bad fishing was. I don't want to do that again this year, until the board says, that's okay for you to do it, because I had taken Webb's permission before, and now he's gone, and so this, I just want to know what your thoughts are on that.
On continuing work?
Yeah, to, to do it this year. We ain't started it yet, but just to continue to, we quit when it gets, you know, when it's not feasible. We'd usually be in August, probably.
Sure. I, I don't know that it's, that it's realistic to put that on the agenda, well, I mean, is it something you want to talk about or talk through in a different meeting?
It's just nullifying you what we're thinking, and I don't want to do it, and everybody's like, oh, we didn't know anything about that. So, that's all I have.
Are all these people property owners?
Yes, sir. They all have boat stickers.
So, if they have stickers, and they're ready to go, and they happen to fill up Thunderbird, or Omaha, or leased Aztec?
We don't ever go there, no.
That's okay, that's where the owner lives.
It would be bumper boats at Aztec.
So, we don't really need to do anything with that, except I hope, wish you well and happy.
Okay, I just, we was just to make everybody aware, so, you know, we didn't have anybody say, oh, I can't do that.
So, that, that does bring me to, just a quick question about that. You said boats, everybody's got stickers. Do you look through those stickers? Is there anybody's up there?
Well, and I'll tell you what David did, he had a SID, the ponte, or light SID, was always there to check his hand, because that's always a day by, to check his hand and make sure there was nobody that didn't have a sticker. We never had that issue, and then.
Can you launch it, Thunderbird?
No, I'll just, I'll just call you, because it's a lot better around.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Comments? Questions? I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Second, move to second, I'll check on it.
Aye.